I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'd like to welcome all that are listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded by both video and audio. During the public comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and then they will each have five minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the public comment section. Members of the public that are connected by phone only, they need to press the star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the public comment section. Those attending in person should sign up at the signup sheet that's located at the entry. Please do so if you haven't so far. Comments are limited to five minutes and they should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions that visitors, please do not disclose any confidential account information or disclose account information on account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may email or call the BPU with their concerns. The agenda and the presentations are found on the BPU website, and if you are using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. My name is Mary Gonzalez, and I'm a member-at-large, position number one, and the board president currently. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, our general manager, David Haley, member-at-large, position one, Tom Groneman, second district, and currently our board secretary, Bob Mylan, who represents the first district, Jeff Bryant, who represents the third district, Rose Mulvaney Henry, who is a member-at-large, number three, and she's currently our board vice chair, Angela Lawson is our deputy chief counsel. I'd like to remind you to put your phone on silent, please. Also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and they pick up and record comments that are made almost anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, would you please rise and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Angela.
Roll call, Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Mylan.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the irregular session agenda of December 21, 2022, are there any questions about the agenda tonight or comments?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
This is Rose, I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our agenda for tonight's meeting. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I return our attention to the work session minutes of December 7, 2022. Are there any corrections or additions?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
All right, the same thing for the minutes of the regular session of December 7. Are there any corrections, additions, comments? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
This is Rose, I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I'll turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a list of people signed up tonight, and then we'll go through this list and then I'll ask Rob if there's somebody online that's wanting to speak as well. So, first person, Evelyn Ha. If you can, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, but if you can go to the podium, you can restate your name and address on the record, please, when you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hawthorne. I live at 2056 North Tremont Street, Kansas City, Kansas, 66101. I'm a native Wyandotte Countyan, born and raised.
Okay, you may go ahead.
I really don't know what I'm here, but I'm here to represent Wyandotte County and Ty and Sarah. The heading on my statement is, "Jesus Quit." I took those two initials for the guys that you're trying to hire in position here at this company. The reason why I feel that they should not be voted in, or however you all want to do it, is because it's too costly. I have my light bill here, and I have the unified government personal property taxes here that belong to me. I'm gonna start with the light bill. About two and a half years ago, a light bill came up with the idea that we have to pay if the water main breaks from the street to my house. I'm in charge of fixing that. Why should I pay your insurance policy? Why should my $5 or $7 go to BPU to keep up your premium with your insurance policy? That's what it looks like to me. You can't afford to pay your insurance premium, so you want me to do it. Second of all, I want Jesus to quit this foolishness because these people that you're getting ready to vote in, are they gonna take the revenue that you give them, or are they native Wyandotte Countyans? Or if they decide to quit in three years, they have taken over a million and something dollars, not counting the perks or whatever, but that's their business. My business is to stop all of this foolishness coming into my neighborhood and make it harder for me and a veteran Navy man, who's my husband, to live in Wyandotte County, Kansas. I have some quick notes that I took down from Ty, and, oh, hurry up, I've only got five minutes. BPU board of members need to instruct staff to work directly with the transparent, allowing the Kansas City Kansas customers being put in danger for power and water shut-off. I could never understand this when I was a young woman living in Wyandotte County, Kansas. Why would you want to cut off our water or our light bill when you're the only one we could come to and have this done? You're still gonna get your money. Why would you do that? You're the only person that has the utilities or the merchandise that we, as Wyandotte County people, need, and then you'll cut us off and give us all those late charges, those other fees, and when did you marry up with the unified government? In 1908, it was supposed to be a community, you have it up there, community utility company. From 1908 to 1992, you all became a part of the unified government. When did you all marry, and why didn't you let us know? And then, another thing, why do we have to subject ourselves to this foolishness? Why do we have to accept what you all say when it's millions of us out here that's living, and I don't know where most of you all live?
You have one minute.
But we need help. We need you all to consider a common person like me.
I think it's just starting. There is. Okay, Rob, let's hear from those remotely.
First person out there, so I'm ending in four zero seven zero. If it's star six, unmute yourself.
Hello. Okay, this is Louise Lynch. I'm not better day because I'm not well. I know all of you are kind of sad about that, and I found it very distressing that there had to be a vote.
Could you please announce your name?
I'm sorry.
I think it's.
I did. I did announce my name.
She's in the car.
She's in the car.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, I'll start over. My name is Louise Lynch, and I am calling in because I am ill today. I know you all are pretty sad about that, and I have to tell you that it's very stressful for me to call in and listen to the first speaker, who was, unfortunately, technically disconnected, and you all are going to continue the vote. You voted on continuing the meeting, so that means you had to vote on whether you wanted to hear all of the people's voice? That is very, very discouraging and disrespectful. This is one of the things that we've talked about in the past. I am gonna urge you all to not approve the budget, but this is one of the things that we, as the community, are more than outraged, that we are not given any kind of consideration or respect. There are many issues concerning the community in regards to bills, in regard to the salaries, in regards to different areas of the budget. I wish I could have been there today, but I can't, and I urge you not to pass this budget. I urge you to make a plan, a real plan, not just giving us extra minutes, a real plan to take this community seriously and give us our due respect. What happened tonight may have been an error in technologically speaking, but it was not an error for you to vote not to hear the rest of the people to continue with the meeting without our say. That has to stop. The other thing that has to stop is asking for people's addresses. If we are gonna follow the charter from the UG, and there it states, we only need to give our name, not our address. It's putting people at risk from being harassed and violating our privacy if we want to speak. That can happen. We need to protect your residents. I need all of you to openly say and tell us what it would look like of you working with us, the community. What is that like in bringing us to the table and seriously discussing this issue, not we're gonna investigate, like Mr. Johnson told us over a year ago, and has done nothing about several of the issues, like Mr. Haley has not responded to myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I see is Ty Gorman. Ty, if you can restate your name and address on the record, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm Ty Gorman. My address is 2843 Parkwood Boulevard, KCK 66104. Yeah, I'm very encouraged about the communications difficulties. I do think that this technical difficulty, I know this technical difficulty knocked out a lot of folks who were trying to participate and have access to the meeting but don't have an hour to wait around and see if the technical things get fixed. I still think this isn't great for sunshine laws, the way that the meeting's continuing, but I'll leave that there and keep going. We can talk about that another time. The points I want to make for tonight before you all have this vote, I would prefer that the budget be, not be voted on, the rate hike and the increased salaries not be voted on, and it just be a continuance of last year's budget until the community can be brought in on the decision-making processes, and that's something that has, not only in this meeting, but in all the other practices of BPU, been lacking transparency and a real good faith effort to bring the community into decision-making processes similar to the way other municipalities and utilities do around the country. Some of the best practices from the Midwest, from national organizations that represent municipal utilities, include engaging stakeholders early and often through well-publicized facilitated planning processes, ensuring that trust and respect are built through transparent sharing of information around the budget, around the assistance programs, around the planning and open door policies of the BPU consensus around these goals, evaluating barriers to access, these planning meetings, potential stakeholders, barriers potential stakeholders might face, and eliminate those. Those are, there's whole guides, step-by-step guides on how municipal utilities can work with the public in a good best practices way, within a planning process, with an integrated resource plan, and I've provided some of those in the past and will continue to provide them in the future and hope that you can vote today to create a process that brings the community in in a real way. At the same time, since that will take time for us to work on, I hope that you can vote today to end all water and electric shut-offs that might put customers at health risk and work with KCK community to cover those costs using federal and state funding sources in the short term. BPU that can put a short-term moratorium and look at the other policies that other utilities have put in place, making sure there's no risk of health or short-term eviction before involuntarily disconnecting anyone. They can instruct staff to collect data on reasons for non-payment, including the current energy usage of pounds, possible cost-effective energy efficiency, hot and cold temps, ages of occupants, medical needs, household income, there's whole, well-working medical device policies and other municipal utilities that keep people from getting shut off and their lives are in danger. You can provide detailed factors to community assistance groups, reach out to customers who are having trouble and at risk of disconnection, and there's a lot of best practice ways to do that, and through health, social service, and having eight weeks of notice before shut-off after two written notices delivered and verified by.
You have one minute.
No late fees, no disconnection or reconnection fees. They don't make sense anymore. You have smart meters. There's no need to disconnect, to punitively deal with customers who are having trouble paying bills. So, in the short term, I'd say a moratorium, and long-term, these simple best practices, prohibitions against terminating when folks aren't able to solve the problem or plan a utility. It's just, I agree with the one other speaker I got to hear, Evelyn Hawthorne. She said, "BPU's gonna get their money, and we need to listen to the community and not just say," as I've heard staff say in the past when we've reached out and tried to have dialogue over the past two years, "that people just need to pay their bills." People try to get out of paying their bills. That's the attitude here, and that's not reality, and there are lots of.
That's fine.
So, work with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
So, before we go, before we go any further, there's a number of, there's a number, there's a lot of numbers that are listed here, so for those of you that are wishing to speak, if you can push the raised hand, that way we'll call you, and then I will assume that those that did not raise their hand or listening.
If you're connected by phone only, you'll have to hit star nine to raise your hand.
Could you repeat that one more time?
If you're connected by telephone only, you'll have to hit star nine to raise your hand. If you're connected through Zoom online, and you'll be able to hit raise hand down at the bottom. If you're Zoom.
We're just trying to identify all of you that are wanting to speak and trying to give you an opportunity. Next person, last four digits.
She's.
All right. So, are there anyone else waiting online to speak?
Not at this time, sir.
And Jerry, what's the status of the internet?
I've been told that the other room is back up and operating, and I need to run over there to verify. So, you can access the machine, which means the internet's working, but I want to check or move again.
Yeah, it would just be more comfortable. I don't think everybody could be stood in there.
I agree, I agree.
And then.
I think for accommodating this.
I don't think we were trying to be mean by taking a vote. We were just trying to get a consensus of, do we want to move in here? Do we want to stay there? Do we want to try to accommodate the people that have been there? I know one of the callers said, shamed us for trying to decide. That's not, that was not our intent to take a vote, too.
I think they were concerned because it was that violation of our, or something. Yeah, I don't think that it truly was.
I don't.
For years, they want a recorded meeting, so it's not a violation.
Yeah.
The violation is if some of us board members meet outside of a meeting and have discussions about BPU business, then it's a violation.
That's a violation.
But I'm just.
Well, we keep our attorney around to keep us. She yells at me a lot.
Okay.
There, you want to go back?
Yes, yes, let's go back. I think we can accommodate more people in there.
Yes.
Involve the chairs.
Now, Aaron, you gotta pick these up. Thank you for all you're doing for us to keep everybody posted.
Mentor. How about you? So, I've not been well. It's been. 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 It's been.
Okay, we're back, and I think we're at the agenda. We're past the public comments, and we are now at general manager staff reports, number seven on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. So, we'll continue on. I'll ask Lori Austin to come up. Board did ask for us to give consideration to a budget transfer, so we'll speak to the board about it.
The item presented to you tonight is a budget transfer. Let me see if I can bring them for us.
You don't need. Lori, you don't need this, do you?
That's what I was gonna put up.
Right.
So, the budget transfer, the discussion was, we had $250,000 remaining in our economic development fund for 2022, and the discussion and potential request was for us to move that money out of the economic development fund and move it into utility assistance. So, this document represents that movement of money. So, it's the board's pleasure.
We're past public comment section.
We can't see it, we can't understand it. No, there was no copies, past copies out.
This is a budget transfer.
Can we just shut that one down?
This is a budget transfer of $250,000 that was in economic development that we didn't spend, that we now want to put into assistance for people who are having trouble with their bill. You know, I just want to get on with the meeting. We've had time for the public comment session.
But we're blind to the conversation because we don't understand it, and when we ask for assistance, guys like we are out of order. We can't see it and don't understand for much, or how much money. It doesn't make no sense for the public.
All right, $250,000 is the amount.
Where's it going?
It is going to wherever the agencies that we use, I suppose, United Way, to give the money out to different agencies to be used.
You already said $500,000 was going to United Way earlier.
This will be an additional.
This is addition.
250.
Tell them, identify all the agencies that's received the money. That's what they asked. What's it gonna say?
United Way, I assume.
That's just one of them.
And so.
There's like 11 or 12 different agencies, too. Go ahead.
And I was just gonna ask some clarifying questions as well, because I know I'm the one who asked for this, so. But so, the thought would be, is that this money would be then dispersed to the United Way this month, and they wouldn't have, there's no restriction on the United Way or any of the agencies through which they disperse the money, they don't have to use it by December 31st, correct?
No, we would carry it over until the next year.
Right.
Okay. So, this would be in addition to.
Yes.
What's on the line item for the budget for next year.
Yes.
Which is roughly $225,000, I believe. Is that right? Okay. And so, ultimately, we would have closer to $500,000 in utility assistance that the utility would be putting back into hardship funds or whatever that go to the agency, 11 agencies or whatever it is, the United Way. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have one clarifying question. So, will this also be treated the same way as the other dollars where it can only be used for utility assistance for KCK residents?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That's important that everyone understands these dollars are only for us, for Wyandotte County homeowners or ratepayers in Wyandotte County. They're the only ones who can use this. It doesn't, KCMO can't use this money or anybody else. It's just our citizens, so.
I'm still saying, can you tell the public, all the agencies that will be receiving the money, they can expose to the people for each of these.
I don't, I don't know. Do we have a list of all the agencies?
There's a list on the website.
On the website.
Okay.
It was on the website.
Okay.
Has the United Way been notified that they're gonna be getting an additional $250,000?
No, I was gonna wait until the board take action first and then notify.
Anticipate that they might get it.
I will follow up with them tomorrow if the board chooses to transfer these funds.
During any other discussion, I move to approve the budget transfer.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this budget transfer of $250,000 to United Way for assistance. I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Lori, stay there. So, next is resolution adopted. Lori, stay there. So next is resolution adopting 2023 budget. Lori, it's got a short presentation, I think, just to kind of recap parts of the budget.
He's going to do my summary first. Yeah, my summary, okay. So December 5th is when we met the board that was staff and we reviewed the 2023 budget. And I just provide you a summary of what our budget objectives are and requirements are for a budget. So it is to provide positive net income, positive cash flow, be able to fund our capital projects, then maintain our cash balances and meet our debt coverage. Some of our objectives and priorities within our capital program on the water side. There's a number of projects there. Some of these are some of the major ones. A majority of these projects are being funded by the water supply loan that we've received through the state of Kansas. So that will be funding about 17 million of the projects on the water side. On the electric operations side, there's a number of annual projects that continue as, as well as completion of the Rosedale substation and the distribution around that substation. On the electric production side is some plant capital replacements. Just maintain that plant, being able to run it efficiently. Next slide is just an overall, these are the funding sources for our budget. So our electric revenues about 281.9 million and water is about 400 or 48 million. Our pilot, which is a pass through between operating revenue and expenses. And then our additional funding sources are the supply loan as well as some cash funding that will be a part of the capital program. So on the next slide is where the money is being used at. So our operating budget 238.6 million. Our debt service is about 58.9. Here's the offset of the pilot comes back on this side. And then our capital budget is 61.8 million. So that's an overall, just our budget in itself. And I'll take questions. Board's pleasure.
Laura, can we go back one slide, please? Okay, so the third column over, the more or less than 2022 adopted that 31 million on the operating budget, that is an increase in the budget from 2022. Is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And, and so I think in 2020, we were talking about how we, we, you, you all had saved the utility $25 million at that point, right? And now we're increasing the operating budget by 31 million from year to year. And the majority of that, I presume, is picking back up on capital projects. Is that fair or no?
That is the operating budget, so that is not.
Oh, right, right, right. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So the majority of that is, is fuel and purchase power.
Fuel and purchase power.
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the money you referenced before of the savings was from our, I'm assuming you're stating the debt refunding that we did? Is, is that from?
Yes.
Okay. And now that reduces the overall debt service budget. So we were, you know, about almost 57, 58 million a year on that. And now we're back down to 51.
Okay. Thank you.
And Andrew, I think has done, I think we've done a couple of meetings where we talked about market prices and kind of what's driving those price increases and it's really kind of where the market is. We all hope that it'll return to normal, normal levels with gas prices and and other, other energy prices that are out there on the market. That is way outside of BP or every, every utility suffers and have to deal with high gas prices and high fuel costs.
Right.
This is Jeff. I move to approve the 2023 budget.
There's been a motion to approve the budget. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
No.
Mylan.
Aye.
Malvany Henry.
No.
That motion carries.
We are ready for miscellaneous comments.
You know, there's, I think I talked earlier about some of the year in retirements. We've had some today. Actually, we've kind of talked to some people and wished them well in their retirement. There's one gentleman here that I talked to the board about already. Don Watt, are you still here? You can come up to the podium. Come up to the podium. So I give a little bit of a highlight of Don's career here, but then I want, I do want Don to, to speak the one thing. I think it's a pretty good story. I didn't, I didn't catch you before to ask to talk to you about this, but hopefully you don't mind. So Don Watt, he began work here at BPU in 1998 as a plant engineer. Came here from Blackin Beach. He'd worked at Blackin Beach for a number of years as a, as an engineer there. Got promoted to, to director of electric production maintenance. Served in that role for a number of years. And then when Darryl Dorsey retired, he got promoted to acting manager of electric production. And then from there, he, he became manager of electric production about a year or so later. He served in that role for almost the whole year as acting. And then 2020, July of 2020, we did some, some title changes. It's kind of, it's a cleanup of our executive management titles. And he was named executive director of electric production on July 4, 2020. Don has a bachelor of science degree from North Dakota State University. He's, he's got a master's in engineering management from the University of Kansas. He also holds a professional engineering license as part of his professional associations. He served on a number of boards, certainly KMEA, Western Fuels that the board, you know, may already know about. He's also in the management committee on Dogwood Generation Plant. Don, if I missed something, I apologize. I'm just trying to keep a short list. And then he worked quite extensively with staff on upgrading the air quality equipment at Nerman Plant to be able to extend the life of that facility. Since some of the board members know that we were under a lot of federal regulation and we were at a point to where we almost had to shut the plant down unless we made a huge investment to take care of some of the emissions and that that investment has paid off for this utility by keeping prices stable, energy prices stable, and also keeping our reliability in check when it comes to serving this community. He's also, as the board knows, have worked quite extensively on trying to keep fuel available for Nerman through some of the disruptions in delivery, train delivery, coal deliveries earlier this year when this nation was facing a potential railroad strike. I'm hoping that we're completely through that. I haven't checked to see if all of the unions have signed off or is there still some minor risks that are still out there? But, you know, I've known Don for, for quite a number of years and and I find him to be a very intelligent guy. He certainly knows electric generation very well. I think he served this community well. He served our utility well. I know Don is looking to travel. So I'm doing his retirement and I've heard that he's getting ready to relocate to warmer weather. I did ask, I did ask one person here, you know, what, what do you think? When you think about Don, what, what's thing comes to mind? And she told me he always wanted to operate a snowplow. But the amazing thing is now he's moving to Florida and I don't know if he's actually satisfied that wish yet or not. Don's been at the utility for 24, almost 24 and a half years. So the one thing I do want Don to talk about is he, he has an interesting, interesting life story and I did jot down some notes, but I don't know that I could talk to that as well as Don. So you were born in Vietnam.
That's correct.
Can you start there and just kind of give us a little bit of your life history, please?
Thank you, Bill. First thing to say, I don't expect to discuss and then I certainly appreciate your kind words. And to me personally, you know, before I go off shoot here, I really appreciate the board, the general manager for allowing me to work at BPU. BPU is a great company. Working at BPU a privilege. And I certainly honor that. And I'm proud to be, you know, part of Water County. I've been here 20 some years now. And I I don't go like Jerry to name everybody in the organization here. But I certainly like to thank my immediate supervisors, Jimmy Ash, Bill Johnson, Don Gray, Darryl Dorsey, and the audio, Bill Johnson. You may not learn, know he was the assistant superintendent at Nerman when I was started. So, and I certainly appreciate all the colleagues to help me and help electric production to help the community over the years. Anyway, getting back to my route. I, I, I left Vietnam as the vote people came to the state in 1985. And unfortunate, I mean fortunately, I was able to the Lutheran Social Services in Minnesota sponsor me. And so during the, the, the three years of high school, I was in Minnesota, Becker County, Minnesota. I was fortunate that to be hosted by a great, great couple. Their name is Elaine and Dennis Fossell. And they still live up there and I go up there, see them quite often that part. But I do appreciate the Lutheran Social Services, the US, you guys, all of you, tax dollar to help out the refugee, the less unfortunate people like me. And certainly gave me the opportunity to finish up high school. And right after high school, I, I don't really know what's going on. I don't really know what to do. And, you know, one thing after the others, another, you know, I look at anything, maybe go to both tech to be an electrician. However, I, I took the ACT test. I didn't do really good on that part because of the language barrier, but on a technical side, I did okay. And consequently, I was able to get a little bit of grant to go to NDSU. And NDSU at the time is cost about $5,000 per semester. And most time I was in NDSU, I probably worked 30 hours a week or so on the side. I was able to pay for quite, quite a bit of it. But during the years I was there, I worked for Swift Accretage. Swift Accretage is a big Turkey plant I were working at. And believe it or not, you know, my finger looking this way is crooked because I was pulling Turkey crop like this for the whole summer long. And typically, the whole summer, I may make up to $5,000, $6,000 the whole summer. And typically, we run about 10, 12 hours a day for six straight days. The, I mean, the turkeys come in over the truck. Example, on an average day, small turkey, we may run 65,000 per day. The minute the truck is coming in, you don't stop until you, I mean, you don't go home until you are done. But anyway, I mean, those hard work and, and it's really teach me well, really teach me ethics. Hey, you have to work at it. And then consequently, the opportunity one after another, I was able to graduate from NDSU and get a job with Blackin Beach, moved out here in May 1992. The bottom line is America is the best place on earth. A lot of people wonder, hey, what heaven is like? It's right here. You don't have to look elsewhere. I was, I, I came from Vietnam. I've been to some other third world country as well and look around. The people in the US, if you are born in the US, you are able to come to the US, live in the US, you are 98% better than the rest of us. So I understand we all have difficulties here. We all have to pay our bills. And consequently, yes, I mean, life is struggle regardless of what position you are in. We all have our difficulties. Please, whatever we have, appreciate what we have. Do the best you can and, and don't mean to say that. I mean, I know some of us are difficult. And then as far as financially, we may not be able to do it. We may have to take another job or seek help elsewhere. But the bottom line is the US is the best place on this earth. And I'm, I'm not sure I go too far in that part of the job. But I do appreciate the community, Water County as a community, the people of Water County. And what gave me and my family the opportunity to work, to live and to enjoy the freedom and enjoy the, the luxury lifestyle here. And Bill is correct. We are moving to Bradenton, Florida. And if you are in the area, please stop by. I mean, I, I strongly insist on that part. And once again, thank you to the board, thank you to GM for allowing me to work at BPU. And that really gave me a, a different perspective of life and, and afford me to, to have some other variety, some other things that everybody want to have. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I do have a small plow that I use on my pickup. And I do operate that at, particularly at the temple primarily, you know, we have a parking lot with 94 space and whenever there's a snow, I do it. Hopefully, maybe tomorrow evening or the, or Friday morning, I may have an opportunity to do it too. No, I do enjoy large equipment, driving trucks. And to me, it's, it's, it's pretty fascinating to follow a snow truck at night when it's pushing snow. I mean, to me is, it's mesmerizing and, and I, I enjoy that a lot.
Let's hope you don't have to use it tomorrow.
So, Don, we again appreciate your service here. You've been a good employee. Surely, there's a lot that we've all learned and benefited from by, by having you here. I'm sure I'm speaking to staff down at the power plant near Manaykuenero because you worked in both locations and and I think, you know, our plant operations are better off today, having you, having you worked with us for all the years you have. So thank you again.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Don. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Good luck in your retirement.
Enjoy.
Enjoy.
Madam President, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, and it's time for board comments. Mr. Bryant?
First and foremost, I want to thank all those in attendance, both here and online, for showing interest in learning more about our local utility. Tonight, the board completed another year of duty to our community. One of our most important jobs as a board is to discuss, revise, and approve the annual budget. This task is not completed in a single day review. It's a culmination of work done throughout the year. By approving the budget, we provide staff with a priority of work to accomplish in 2023. It also sends a message to our rating agencies that we are significantly aligned in the direction of the BPU. This is very important as the rating agencies watch our interactions to ensure that the utility is a low risk for bond money. If they lose faith in the board's ability to provide clear direction, it could cost all of us in higher interest rates for capital improvement projects. I would like to thank my fellow board members and the staff for their patience with me in 2022. I am passionate about my hometown and sometimes it impacts the way I interact with others. Please know that I have the utmost respect for all of you and will continue to hold your opinions with high regard. I look forward to seeing all of you here and online in the new year as we foster an improved line of open communication. Grassroots groups have always been a vehicle for change in our country. There is no doubt in my mind that the more brains we have working on our issues, the more potential solutions we can uncover. Thank you again for taking time out of your schedules to attend this evening's meeting. I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be safe and share some kindness with a stranger.
Mr. Haley?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to say this has been a very good process for me. I am the new member on the board. I'd like to certainly thank those who have come today. I'd like to certainly thank those who have come today and expressed your concern, ongoing concern, and articulated where those concerns come from with not only the budgetary process, but some of our policies. As someone who considers themselves an advocate in our community for a long time, it's kind of who I am and want to continue to be. Thank you sincerely, not only here, but also that are online. Brief departure, Dong, just tremendous job. Thank you. Godspeed to you and very best to you. And thank you for the service that you have brought with such strength to this, to this utility and wish you all the best in the future. So I did not support the budget. Was one that voted no. And I want to say to those who work so hard to bring it together, our staff, and everything that's been outlined here, I find some extremely meritorious areas here that I would like to support. I've been in the state legislature for over twenty-five years. And during that twenty-five years, I may have voted for a budget, for the budget, for maybe ten. I usually don't vote for budgets unless I have a strong indication that the priorities and the policies and the unsuggested but need to be implemented reforms are somehow reflected and would more align with the only reason that David Haley is in this thing, and that is for the needs of people. So whether it's in the state or certainly now, one no out of one time, this is my first budget. I'm a no, but I'm looking forward because some reforms have been implemented since I've been here. There is an uptick. Was pleased to see the transfer of the money to the United Way from Economic Development. But in closing, as we know, this is going to be one of the, the culture of governmental concern, whether it's in the state or whether it's here, is often negligent. We see that wherever we go. And I think that we need to enhance here what I'd like to see. BPU have a greater customer service. We've talked about the lobby being open. I know that there are many people who have not been able to access. I was here a couple of times and saw that they could actually not come and have their concerns met human, one-on-one, interactive. And so it is my hope, continuing hope, that we will find that this year. Although the budget did pass without that as a line item to reopen the lobby. And as I mentioned, the others to divvy up the bill. The UG charges, those taxes that we're paying, I paid my taxes for my house the other day. Sticker shot. But every month, we are paying UG taxes every month. And the penalty, if you don't pay your real property taxes for three years, is you go up for a tax sale. The penalty for not paying the UG taxes that are passed through on our utility means we look at a disconnect because they pass through here. So again, these and other concerns are those that I'd hope that we'd address and that perhaps I'll be a part of being the eye in the upcoming budgetary between now and then. I hope that our holiday season does find us one. Postscript, the new warming center is open here at five fifty State. Used to be the workforce center right across the street. It opened last night. I went there for the ribbon cutting and stopped by there today and saw the line out front. Saw somebody who's been very, very active during the course of my being involved in campaign. And I said, what's going on, what's going on? And he does not know that I'm with the BPU. And he said last year that one of the problems that he got caught up in, that he never caught up on was the BPU. We're a public utility, a publicly owned utility. The bottom line is that as the monopoly here, being Wyandotte Countyans, we should find some kind of way that my friend and my supporters not waiting in line to spend the night in the warming center overnight. And I'm committed to continue to try to do that. I apologize, Madam President, for the length of it, but it was on my heart. The best in the holiday season to everybody.
So Mr. Haley, you disapprove of the budget, right?
Pardon me?
Are you the only one that disapproved of the budget being going through?
I don't know if I'm the only one that voted no.
I'm sorry, but we had, we set that aside, the time aside for our citizens to speak at the beginning of the meeting. And right now, we're going to finish our board comments.
We wanted to know, did the budget pass? We are passing the budget to all your board members or what?
Four, four people voted for it. Two people voted against it. It had the majority of votes, it passed.
That's what I wanted to know.
Mr. Groneman?
I heard, I heard your voices. I got many emails and calls about the vote, to vote no on the budget. We've been working on this budget for six months or more. All the division heads, department heads have come in and made their presentations. We heard it. We had the opportunity to go over the budget with them. At that time, we did. And I think that the budget that was passed is a good budget. The money doesn't have to be spent, even though it's budgeted. The money can be moved. Just because it's been passed, and it was passed, doesn't mean that, you know, that it has to be spent or that it can't be moved. As we saw tonight, we moved money from an excess from the Economic Development Fund to further utility assistance, two hundred and fifty thousand, more than double what we had just been paying into utility assistance next year, for the rest of this year and next year. Customer service, I think that what, you know, there's much brought up about access to federal dollars. Those dollars, if they're out there, we've read about it. But it takes time for it to trickle down. I know that our staff, at least I hope that our staff, is doing everything in their power to see that we get every dollar that's available that we can get to help our citizens utility assistance, weatherization, whatever other programs that we can, that we can get money for. We need to be diligent. We need to make sure that we are out there working to get every, every dollar that's available. BPU bill with the city charges, I'm with you. We've been trying for a long time to get separate bills and not have the BPU and the UG bill together. Maybe now with your help, you can help us what was complete, what we've been trying to do for years, which was to, you know, separate the BPU bill of the charges and the city charges. We didn't have any luck. The UG didn't pay any attention to us. Maybe with you now behind us, maybe we can get that and get that accomplished at the new year. So I look, I look forward to working with, with you in the new year. Like I said, just because the budget was passed tonight, that doesn't set anything in stone. The money doesn't have to be spent. The money can be moved around. And perhaps we can work together and work on these issues and problems that exist for a better budget for next year's budget. So with that, I want to thank Don Watt for his years of service to the community, to the BPU, and wish him well. And I wish everyone here a happy holiday.
Can, can we just get through our comments? And then the board would be glad to, and finish our meeting, and our board will be glad to speak with you. Mr. Mylan?
Thank you, thank you. And appreciate the comments that were made from, from Tom here and Mr. Haley. And what I'm hearing from a number of years, a lot of complaints about the border of public utilities. And the feeling is that the great players or customers are the only ones that pay for everything. I just want to make you know that the revenue we receive comes from three sources, in case you don't know. Residential, that's you after a day. Commercial, that's all the business like Jill and Mollers and the Nebraska Furniture Market and so forth. And industry, like Jill and Mollers. There are three elements that revenue is received to make sure we have water, public power, and so forth. So keep that in mind. But the most important thing that comes out of all of this is probably three things. Communication, communication, and communication. Now I'm looking at what happens here is that every meeting is spoke to and identified by the president, our resources, and how you can get everything we say in writing, go to website page, or find out what you need to know. But to me, that's not good enough. With a new technology and so forth, I'm hearing that we need more communication. Now, I'm not so sure just how we accomplish that, that's one reason. Some of that is technology, some of that's hard copies, some of that's newspapers and type other communication. So I'm hearing things that the public is not really clear on what we should be doing, how we should be doing it. What I hear the word has been most prominent here the last few years, transparency, transparency. Well, what does that really mean? I've heard all kind of versions of it. Let me tell you what transparency is all about. It's almost like our old system of a, we call it show and tell. Transparency, which says, what are you going to do with the money? What you going to build? How you going to build it? That's one portion of it. That's the front end of it. But the back end of that is, did you accomplish that? And that's the thing that's most important. But now, that's not good enough. Validation is what's important, folks. If you're going to do something, tell me how you going to do it? It wasn't like meant by objective, that's about twenty-five years ago. It's almost back to that again. Tell me what you going to do, how you going to do it, how we be evaluated. Transparency is almost the same thing. Up front, tell in, how you evaluate me. But what's important that is validation. Did you actually do that? Did you build a building? Yes, where is it? It's down the street. Go see it. It's standing tall. That's validation, folks. We can only do what we need to do. This book here takes a lot of hard work. People are very sensitive. A division manager makes sure you have a budget here. Now, if you don't want a budget, I know one thing would happen to us. Monday morning, January the first, we would have no water, no power because we don't have a budget. It's not going to be that sincere. Objective budget is nothing more than recycling what you're doing. We are a non-profit agency. Every dollar that comes into this agency here is non-profit. We don't have money in our back pocket going to the bank and paying dividends. This is a recycle organization, in case you don't realize that. The money comes in three ways, residential, commercial, and industry. It's recycled again to make sure that all them costs is done. The operation management, recycle, recycle, recycle. So everything you talk about is your money go right back in to make sure we have water, drinking water, disposable water, electric power on demand. That's what we're doing, folks. Now, how you do that? Are we doing it correctly? Should we increase our management and our communication much better? I agree wholeheartedly. I had about ten different items here that I think tonight you touched on them. But the key things that you talked about was cut off, don't discredit services, utility too high, etc. All of those things have been recycled and over and over and over for thirty-one years. Our water department started in nineteen oh-three, two thirteen, that was one hundred years. So we've got a hundred and for five years of water operation. We need to have that. So keep in mind, this utility is not to cut you on and cut you off. There's got to be some policy and rules and regulation. Now, here's the strange thing about it. You have the opportunity to come here the first and third Wednesday, like you did tonight. Express yourself, very important. That's what public utility is all about. We are one of two thousand public utilities across America. We're in a top fifty of the two thousand, so we're doing something right. But we need to be doing more. And what you're telling me tonight is, we need more answers, you want more communication. And I guess you asked us for some hard copies, addition to the technology we have because apparently it's not working like it should work. I can't make everybody have a TV or monitor or computer, what have you. All we can do is make sure we explore all we can and make sure the information that you want, you receive it. Now, you've got a situation tonight that the budget approved with four of us. It only takes four to approve the budget. That doesn't mean that the other two that didn't vote for that are negative if they perceive that what they think should happen, which is a good thing. Because I don't think anything is a hundred percent. If they think a hundred percent, something is wrong. I guess nine hundred percent, I would say, because something's not coming out right. This is my theory. Well, with that, I'm saying that it's proud to be part of the community that comes forward. You can't go to the gas company and say nothing. You can't go to Kewa TV and say nothing. You can't go to the telephone company and gas company. All those people are online. Talk to them some kind of on telephone or I don't care how you do it. But you have opportunity to come here, express yourself in charity and good faith. And that's why we're here, to make sure we serve what you need. There's got to be some moves, some regulation, otherwise you have no good go man. And here to serve and not to be served. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mulvaney Henry?
Thank you, Madam President. Dong, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service to BPU. Bradenton, is that what you said, you're moving to Braden? I want to make sure I get that number. Because I mean, you're going somewhere warmer, and we all know what's going to be tonight. But congratulations for real. You know, I've heard all the other board members tonight talk about, you know, that they're hearing, you know, this community that showed up tonight, that showed up to the last meeting, that's had community meetings. They're attending online. And, and I, and I believe that the board members are sincere, that they're hearing you. You know, the issue that I have is that we're not doing anything. You guys are asking us to put a moratorium on utility shut offs, particularly right now in the holiday season. And I'm not hearing us do that. You know, I for one would vote for that right now. Because I think that, you know, one of the gentlemen tonight, I think Mr. Gorman online, spoke about, you know, developing best practices and having more community engagement. I think every one of us up here is appreciative of the fact that you all, on a very cold night, showed up here tonight. It's very often we come to this room and there's only maybe one resident here or less. So we appreciate that. But we can appreciate it all we want. You guys can come out and tell us, you know, what you're hearing in the community and you're speaking on behalf of others. But if we don't do anything, then I consider my job here to have failed. And so I hear you, but I also want to do something. And so, you know, what I would propose that, that this board would entertain in the first meeting in January is to develop a, a community-based organization that is, that works collaboratively with the utility to develop some of those best practices. I know that you guys vote for us board members. And I know that we're representatives of, you know, our community. But at the same time, I don't know that, you know, Mr. Bryant said earlier, you know, we welcome as many brains as we can to try to get to solutions. And I, I know he means that. And what I feel like we're missing right now is the community engagement on this. And, you know, if, if there could be a collaborative working group to try to do some of these things, I think that would be a very, very important step forward that this board can make to, to help the staff engage better. I think it opens further, opens lines of communication along the lines of Mr. Mylan said. You know, you got You know, you guys were here. You know I didn't vote for the budget. And, you know, Mr., Mr. Mylan is right. I mean, it doesn't mean that I disagree with everything there, but this is the first time in three years that I've had this many people from the community say, come out and voice their opinion, voice their opposition to this for various reasons. And I honestly, I think at the, at the base of it is you guys want to have a voice at the table when some of these decisions are being made, not necessarily the entirety of the budget, but some of these things that are impacting our community members. And that's really important. It's important to every board member up here, I know, but it's really important to me as well. And so, so that's something I want the board to consider, you know, at the first of the year. But I mean, tonight, I, I don't know if it's appropriate. It could be out of order. So I apologize, Madam President, if I am. But, you know, I would vote for a moratorium on utility shut offs through the end of the year for any reason.
Madam President, we were already doing that.
You already moratorium for the end of the year?
The question, I thought about it and one of the gentleman was up here. I didn't answer it, but yes. Starting today through the holiday season, we're not disconnected.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Bill. So we do not need a motion for that?
We do not need a motion for that at this time. I revoke my motion if I made one. I apologize.
I don't know that it was.
I, I, well, yes. So again, thank you all for showing up. Please enjoy your holiday season and be safe.
I'm going to just finish with some really brief remarks before we adjourn. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate you on your retirement, Dong, and thank you so much for your service here. As a board member, we all have a duty, a fiduciary duty that I take very seriously and I know the rest of these board members do as well. We continue as a city and a nation to be in a recovery from a pandemic that we didn't really know how to deal with. And so how do we, how do we balance what we need? How do we balance our expenditures and our revenues? While we leave enough to have some for unforeseen circumstances and how do we patch up our old, old infrastructure? So the budget preparation did not start with that workshop that we held on December the fifth, which some of you came out to, to see or listen to. But it started many months before that. We started with trying to figure out what the cost of the fuel would be to power, to send the power and the heat to your homes and how we were going to buy the, the things we need to make your drinking water clean. And in that time, we discovered that there's many price increases. As you probably know, when you go to the grocery store, the, the things that we need to keep the utility running are going up as well. There's supply chain demands that help, that hinder us. And so for me to have the budget preparation I did and then vote no when I had every opportunity to question, to ask for more information, to, to request a more detailed explanation if I didn't understand or listen to and get additional feedback and ideas, as we did tonight. Thank you, Rose. It would not make sense to me to vote no when I'd had every opportunity to learn more. What sometimes gets forgotten in these discussions is our employees give to the United Way in a manner that far exceeds many other places that employ a lot more people than we do. We've been in the top tier of giving probably ever since I served, I've served on this board. And that money that they send to the United Way through their generosity, our employees, goes to help people who need help with paying their utilities. I, I would also say that in studying and absorbing all this information, I realized today and during these discussions that we have not done a very good job in communicating what the public power, really the power of public power and what it can do for the community. So going forward, we will do a better job with that. I invite you all to come back, to have your five minutes at the podium, to call any of us with your questions. If there's something that you don't understand, I hope there's a way that we can communicate it better to you. So my goal, my resolution, will do a better job of communicating with you, hopefully. And I'll do a better job of communicating the goodness and the power that our public utility is for our community. I would call for a motion to adjourn.
Rose, I move to adjourn.
This is GFI second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Bryant?
Aye.
Solis?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Mylan?
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
That motion carries.